This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rice. Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the City of Hasslet's Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, August 31st, 2021. The time is 6:30 PM. This is Chairman Greg Caddish speaking. This time, we're going to do attendance by roll call. Since we are conducting this meeting by teleconference, we need to confirm that we do have a quorum present. So when I call your name, if you would, just confirm that you're in attendance, so I can recognize who is here. Ms. Snedeker?
I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Wallach?
I'm here.
Mr. Hillborn?
Here.
Mr. McCusson? And I was notified that he was likely not going to be present this evening, so he is absent. Greg Caddish is here. Mr. Flaxbark?
I'm here.
And Mr. Hayes?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and so we do have a quorum present. And since we are absent, one regular member, alternate one from our alternates would be able to participate in this evening's voting during the appropriate times. And I believe that's Mr. Flaxbark, your alternate one, correct?
I'm not sure.
Ms. Rice, can you confirm that?
Yes, it is correct.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we do have a quorum present. Moving on, Agenda Item 2. Since this is being conducted via teleconference, there are some general practices that we've had in the past that really help ensure that we have a smooth meeting during the call. If you are not speaking at any time during the call, or if you're here just to listen in, please make sure you keep your microphone muted. That way, we don't pick up any background noise, and those who are speaking are able to be well heard. If you do want to get recognized during any public hearing times, if you would, please put your name in the chat field, and I will call on you during the appropriate time. And if you do speak during a public hearing time, we do limit the time to two minutes. So please make sure that you watch your clock if you do take advantage of the opportunity to speak during a public hearing. All right, moving on. Agenda Item 3, Items of Community Interest. So the city offices will be closed on September 6th, and that's an observance of Labor Day, so that's Monday, September 6th. And the library is going to be reopening on September 7th at 9:00 AM, and at that time, they will resume their regular, normal operating hours. That brings us to Agenda Item number 4, the Minutes for Review from our last Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting on July 27th. Those minutes reflect everything properly, and you are supportive of what's been documented, that we can have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Okay, motion's been made by Paul. Is there a second?
I'll second it. It's Dennis.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Hillborn's seconded. So do a roll call vote. Ms. Snedeker?
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Hillborn?
Yes.
Greg Caddish is a yes, and Mr. Flaxbark?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Minutes are approved as written. Moving on, Agenda Item 5, A, Status of Current Projects. So there is a report included with our minute pack, I'm sorry, meeting packet for this week. So if you have interest in understanding what the status of any past projects that we've reviewed and approved, you can look at that report. That's a document, SR 21413, which is attached again to our packet. Moving on, Agenda Item 6, A, Hold a Public Hearing, Consider Approval Approving a Sp- I'm sorry, was there? Yes.
Yeah, this is Paul. As far as the report, can we ask Mike, if Mike, I think Mike's on, Mike Thudford? A question came up previously, and I wanted to hear the answer again about the vines out there. There's two houses under construction, and construction seemed to have stopped on those. I think there was an issue with the design.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, Paul, but we, there is no discussion on our agenda for these. This is just for our purposes, to consume the information or get an update. So there was no discussion planned for that item.
I'll call Mike later.
Okay, moving on. Agenda Item 6, A, Hold a Public Hearing, Consider Approving a Specific Use Permit per Section 4.3.6 of Chapter 14 of the zoning ordinance to allow, in addition to the existing 3,000-square-foot accessory structure on a residential lot described as Lot 2, Block 20, Hugh White Estates, within the City of Hasslet, Texas. And that's more commonly known as 109 Bain Road. And is somebody from the city staff going to give us an overview of what's being requested here?
Chairman, this is Mike. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, very good. Essentially, this is a specific use permit for 109 Bain Road, also known as Lot 2, Block 20, Hugh White Estates. The applicant is present. He is requesting to enlarge an existing 3,000-square-foot shop that is on his property. He is requesting to add 1,020 square feet to the north side and to the south side of the existing structure. According to our zoning ordinance, this is required. A specific use permit is the only relief of, or avenue of relief for such a request. If you have any questions, I'm here. Applicant is also here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thudford. Does the applicant have anything that they would like to comment on at this time?
Yeah, this is Ryan Gibson on the applicant.
You could just state your address for us as well.
Oh, sorry, 109 Bain.
Thank you.
The subject property is my property. I just wanted to highlight that it's not necessarily enlarging the bill. It is enlarging the building, but part of it will be a covered porch, similar to the photo. That's, I believe, it's just a little bit higher on your exhibit number seven. So the south side will be covered porch, two-thirds of it will be covered porch, so not enlarging the building. It's considered enlarging the building by the regulations, but it's a porch, not necessarily a full building. The enlargement more is the north end.
Okay, anything else you want to share with us this evening?
Just that, you know, I'm a hobbyist, airstream trailer. I wouldn't say restore, because I don't restore them to original. And so a 3,000-square-foot is fairly full when you put an airstream trailer in there to work on it. So I just need a little bit more space, and I appreciate your consideration on this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against the specific use permit requested on Agenda Item 6, A? And I'm trying to look at the chat field, and I don't see anybody's name has been entered in the chat field, so recognizing no one desired to speak during the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll open to discussion. Is there any questions for the city staff or the applicant?
Well, this is Paul. I'm trying to read the summary here from the staff. I guess, did that, that came from Michael? Yes. So are we saying literal, you said literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship? Would result? Michael?
Yeah, let me get to that.
Is that, I guess my question is, is that a statement, or is that what the owner is saying? I'm not sure who's making that statement, because it contradicts in the next sentence.
Now, I apologize. A portion of this report was written by Wes Morrison when he was here. I'm trying to digest that right now. Mr. Wallach, can you restate that question real quick for me?
Under the executive summary. Due to special conditions, then there is a Okay, all right, that's underlined. So it says, "literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship." So I guess the paragraph below that says, "section 4.3.6 does not create a hardship." Well, it's that there are significant topography changes. It does appear the literal enforcement of the ordinance would still allow additional accessories, but not in the location the property owner desires. So what are we getting at here?
So essentially, the applicant could build another 3,000-square-foot building on the property if he wished to do so. There are some topography challenges with the property that would make that difficult to do, but it is a possibility that he could do that. He is just wishing to build these wings onto each side.
And is this structure directly behind the primary residential structure on the property? Or is it offset, where it's visible from the road?
It is visible from the road. It's on the corner of White and Bain. And essentially, the house's address off of Bain, so it is technically behind the building, behind the house.
Okay.
So basically, all they want, just extend, it looks like, what would that be, north and south Bain Road?
Yes, sir.
Extend porch to the north and an extension to the south. Okay, the existing building.
Okay, there was a number of notifications made to the surrounding property owners, so.
Everybody within 200 feet got the notice, sir?
Thank you.
Were there any objections? Did we get any, did the city receive any written objections from adjacent property owners?
Staff has received no written objections.
Okay, any additional questions? Not as our motion.
I'd like to make a motion recommending to City Council the approval of a specific use permit as stated in Agenda Item 6, 6A.
Okay, Ms. Snedeker made a motion to recommend approval. Is there a second?
I'll second it. It's Dennis.
Okay, Dennis is seconded. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Snedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Hillborn?
Yes.
Greg Caddish is a yes. Mr. Flaxbark?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, sir, for being here this evening to speak on your behalf. And moving on, Agenda Item 6B, Hold a Public and Zoning Workshop and Possible Action to Recommend to City Council Revisions to the Current Ordinances by Adding Specific Lighting Requirements to our Subdivision Ordinances. So this is a workshop. We're going to take a look at some past language that was in our ordinances prior to some changes to our ordinances that took place, I believe, in 2017. But if you look in our current ordinances, and I actually requested that this be placed on the agenda, and so at my direction, the city staff took some time to put this together. We also put in some documentation here of what used to be in our ordinances. I guess, a couple of months ago, Dorian and I started really trying to understand where all of the prior text went that was in the overlays. So at one time, let me just speak first about what used to be here. So at one time, there was various overlays within our, I guess, development areas. So there was a 35 overlay, there's an airport overlay, there was an Old Town overlay, then there was a local retail transition overlay on 156, and then I believe there was an Old Town overlay as well. And there was lighting ordinances, or at least lighting requirements that were outlined for these various overlay districts. But when we pulled all of those overlays out, I think the only one that remains now is the airport overlay, all of those standards were removed. And so basically, there's very little detail around what lighting standards should be adhered to when somebody brings a development project forward. And so we've seen some examples recently of where lighting was proposed on buildings, and we really couldn't do anything about it, because it met the ordinances as they currently are presented. But, you know, they weren't shielded, there was lighting that wasn't shielded. It certainly was much brighter than what was allowable under some of our prior lighting standards. And so my interest is to come up with a recommendation for the city that is, that allows us to preserve some of the dark night sky that we have, protect the adjacent property owners from light spillage or light pollution that occurs when somebody uses fixtures that are too bright or aren't shielded properly, and really, you know, try to make the City of Hasslet still feel like the community it started out, which was a kind of a rural community, by trying to preserve as much of the night sky as we can in our community. So I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read through what used to be here, but if we need to go through that in detail, I would be happy to, you know, point out the specific components of the lighting that was in here at one time. But, you know, Dorian, I guess I would ask for your input first, since you were part of the P&amp;Z when we wrote these standards the first time. What is your perception of what used to be here versus what's here now?
Um, I don't know. It looks like some of it has changed, and some of it I don't quite remember. But it's kind of upsetting that a lot of this stuff was left out of our original zoning when the things got changed.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You know, when they codified or whatever they did.
Yeah, I'm not sure how it happened or why it happened. But there's a couple of different approaches that, if we actually do want to enhance the lighting standards within our ordinances, there's a couple of different approaches that we could go about doing this. We could have one standard that applies to everything, and that was, that's one approach that we could use. And/or we could have specific lighting standards for different areas within our zoning guidelines as well. Now, if, now the letter here says, "if multiple zoning districts are desired, then the outdoor lighting standards might be best adopted as a new section under Article 5, Design and Development Standards," which is the portion of zoning ordinance where landscaping, fencing, and parking requirements are defined. And then the lighting standard would need to be, would specify in which districts the lighting standard would apply. Otherwise, we could just write a standard that applies everywhere, probably with the exception of the airport, Alliance Airport District, and then we could have one standard that is applicable everywhere.
So I have a question. When you do one standard for all, wouldn't things be different for, like, commercial versus residential?
Well, we never really had specific lighting standards for residential. It was more for these overlay districts that we had written before.
I thought at one time, we had mentioned that in the front houses, they couldn't lighting those little, like, garden lights up. We asked for them to be downcasted. Am I mistaken? That was probably the only thing there.
Yeah, but I don't remember. I don't remember lighting. I don't recall lighting standard, you know, we ever addressed the lighting standards for residential properties. Other than maybe like accessory buildings, where, you know, people had those big, round, you know, high-pressure sodium lights that, you know, just cast light in 360 degrees. I think those things were one thing that we said was not permissible. Maybe, I think that that was in there. I don't remember if there was anything else. But maybe we ought to just talk first of, since this is a workshop, you know, anybody can speak, and, you know, we can ask questions, and, you know, we can have as much discussion on this as we want. But maybe we ought to just kind of get a sense of whether or not we, we as the Planning and Zoning Commission, feel like we need to make some changes and improvements to our lighting standards within our zoning ordinances. So anybody have any thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, this is Paul. So the, when I'm looking at this, after the executive summary, the first, that, whatever color you want to call it, orange-out, yellowed-out thing, 110-2018, this is the old ordinance? Is that what you're saying, that got? This is the wording that got deleted from the current ordinance? What is an overlay district, by the way?
You know, hold on a second. I don't think this is the old text. This looks like the current text.
I don't know what this is.
I don't think this is from our original lighting standards that we did in the beginning.
No, this is what, this is the current text, but I don't know why. Ms. Rice, did you attach the email that I sent that had the old ordinances?
Yes, sir, I did.
Well, see the note on the left? It's yellowed out. This is from the zoning ordinance that was effective prior to being repealed and replaced in December of 2017. It's dated 110-18. So this is the new stuff? Apparently. Date in 110 of 2018. Is that?
Well, repealed and replaced would indicate that this was, the way that's written would indicate this was the prior text, but.
I know it. That was effective prior to being.
Yeah, so let's look specifically at Section C. What is this? It's 4 4D1E, exterior site lighting. It's at the bottom of page 178 of 214 there?
Yes.
Okay, so this is what the text was. So the primary goal of the exterior illumination design was to establish a sense of safety, direction movement, all that. Light levels needed to be, were, needed to be adequate for both pedestrian and automobile safety. It had to conform to a current light luminance and illuminance levels. Design philosophy for exterior lighting is to identify within the site elements to be illuminated. So on the site plan, they had to have the lighting standards included. And, you know, you may have heard me ask questions about this of Wes and Mr. Reeves. Is, you know, we're in the site plan, you know, why aren't we seeing the lighting standards? And because this was all removed, it wasn't a requirement in the site plan, apparently.
Who removed it?
I don't know. When they did the, when they made all the changes to the zoning ordinances, I'm not sure who actually omitted it, but it was omitted.
So this is, this was printed from Franklin Legal. That's our attorney, I'd take. Is that Rob?
Correct.
Franklin Legal, net Franklin, print viewer?
Well, Mr. Alabon is our city attorney, yes.
But he's Franklin, right?
No, no, his name's not Franklin. His name's Rob Alabon.
May I speak, sir? This is Jim Quinn. Franklin Publishing is our codification company that codifies all the ordinances thing, and this is where this come from. This is our official codification.
I got you. I just thought Alabon was Franklin Legal. I thought it was a law firm. Okay. I don't know who he's with. Okay, well, we still don't have a replacement for Wes Morrison yet, right? They're looking. And Wes was going to work on this for us, isn't that right?
Well, that was correct. And in his absence, you know, I asked the city staff to put this on the agenda, so we could start some dialogue. Absent, you know, we don't need Wes to, or a new Wes to help us determine whether or not we want to make these changes to our lighting ordinances. We didn't have a city staff representative help us design them last time. It was the Planning and Zoning Commission came up with them.
You guys wrote this? Wow.
We wrote the lighting, right? We actually, there was a lot of stuff we worked on, but we had workshops on signing ordinances, signage, on lighting, all kinds of stuff years ago.
Very good.
It wasn't any one person. It was a lot of, a lot of people offering input there.
So you're saying that what you had for the overlay districts has been removed except for the airport?
Correct.
But the planning and zoning at the time was satisfied with those other parts of the ordinance that pertain to the other districts. You guys wrote that and approved it, and then you say somewhere along the line, they got removed, and only the airport overlay remains in the ordinance?
That's my understanding. There's some very limited language about lighting in our current ordinance, but it's very, very limited.
Yeah, and we don't know who or why that was removed, why the, it seems to me that what you did was pretty detailed. And now it's almost as though it's gone to pretty generic. Because we did run into problems when we're looking at some of these massive warehouses coming up and talking about, you know, lighting.
And the real meat of what we had in here is in the second paragraph in the Section E, Exterior Lighting. You know, so in this, it says, "The fixture orientation and design shall minimize the fixture as a source of direct glare, both within the site, and particularly as viewed from the street, adjacent sites, and by the air." So the idea.
Where are you?
I'm on page 179, second paragraph, maybe it's the third paragraph of Sections E, Exterior Lighting.
179.
Starts out, "fixture orientation and design."
All right. Oh, okay.
Okay, so let me really point out some of the key things that were included in this. So, "shall minimize the fixture as a source of direct glare, both from within the site, and particularly as viewed from the street, adjacent property, and by the air." So when you look at a property, you should never be able to see a light fixture that's just throwing light directly back at you.
Yeah.
That's what's that saying. Whether you look at it from the street, from an adjacent property, from the air, you should never see a light fixture that's throwing light directly at you. Obviously, if you're underneath the fixture, that's different, but that's not the adjacent property, the air or the street.
Right.
And the next, the next part here says, "In addition, light trespass from the site into the sky adjacent sites and streets shall be limited to no greater than 10% of the design." So only, so this restricts how much light can pass beyond your property boundary. And, you know, that was the number we used then. I don't know if it's the right number, but for today's purposes. But that was the approach that we used when we came up this, the last time. And that's 10% of the design of any given fixture.
Right. Doesn't matter what.
And then all lighting, or all direct downlighting, had to be done using fixtures that had cutoff at the horizontal, so at the 90 degree. So you couldn't have any of these Cobra Head bubble lights, like the main, you know, some of the streetlights that you see down the, in between lanes or at the roadside. You couldn't have those big, high-pressure sodium lights, like. You, you couldn't have those big high pressure sodium lights like on the side of an outbuilding. You know, those would not meet the standard because they're not shielded from the ninety. So everything had to be shielded from the ninety to keep you from being able to see the, the actual light source inside that fixture. From an adjacent property or from the street.
All right.
So we didn't have this long list of this is the type of fixtures you can use, or you know, this style, that style. We didn't get into any of that. We just, you wanted to address the light pollution. And try to protect the, the, you know, the, the lifestyle of the adjacent property owners, especially as retail started to come in. Alongside some of the residential communities that might be in place along one fifty six. And maybe Old Town and some of these other areas. And so, and now with. You know, development happening behind Hugh White and some of that might being retail, you know, there's also an interest that. Yeah, we need to think about lighting over there as well. So that's why this, to me, this is a very important topic.
So that paragraph you just read is no longer part of our lighting ordinance?
That's correct.
And we don't know why it was taken out or who took it out?
I don't know the, the reasons. I don't know if it was an intentional omission or if it was, um. Lost in the translation. I'm not sure about that. And I, you know, I don't really, I'm not looking to point fingers or find, find reasons. I want, what I'm trying to do is. Understand, do we want to put something back into our ordinances for the future?
Well, unless. I mean, this is just a couple of paragraphs, part of it and everything else, but if the rest of it is as, makes as much sense as what you just read. Why would we not put it all back into the org? Because we have such a mishmash of development around here. Residential, commercial, big distribution warehouses, everything else all around us. And you, you're not going to cover it with, you know, one size doesn't fit all at all.
So if we were to ask. Our city attorney to put some language back in, to draft some language that we could consider.
Are you saying that those first three paragraphs?
Go ahead. Say that again, Ms. Denerger.
Would, would you say, oh, I'm sorry. Would you say Greg, that those first three paragraphs would be enough? To handle all the different districts?
First three, you mean, what he just read?
I think, my, my view, I think all of those paragraphs in section E.
Well, it's actually three paragraphs.
Yeah, one, two, three. I see four, but. One starts out the primary goal. The second starts out the design philosophy. Three starts out.
Well, I don't understand. Why, why would you want to differentiate, differentiate, I can't say that. Between weekdays and weekends? Does, I don't understand that paragraph.
So yeah, so I actually, this was, this was at my request. If a business isn't operating. Do we really want their parking lot to be at the same illumination levels at night? That they do during normal business hours? And so my, my interest in this was.
Okay, I see.
Maybe we should ask them to, to lower the illumination levels or turn them off. Or have them controlled in a way in which, you know, we, again. Our town looks a little less active at night when they're not operating.
Isn't, isn't that still a security concern?
Say that again?
Isn't that still a security concern even on weekends?
Uh, well, it's so, the idea wasn't that it goes dark, that it just reduces the illumination levels, especially, you know, not around the perimeter of the building itself, but. You know, in, in larger parking lots and stuff where the, you know, there's no vehicles parked or anything like that. But, you know, nobody was trying to tell.
Sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead and speak.
In essence, you're saying like they should have a big dimmer switch.
That's, that's.
And is that feasible to do?
Yeah. And that's almost the way I described it, illumination controls, and that is. Much more achievable today than it was when we wrote this thing, you know, five or six or seven years ago.
Well, if that's something that's possible, I would be in agreement with that.
So let's just get a sense from, from everybody. Does anybody feel like we don't need to address this? All right. That sounds like everybody, the silence on that is good. So the, the next question that I'll ask then, does anybody think that there, there's gaps in what? The old, in this four paragraphs of section E, does anybody feel like? There's something in addition to this that we should have. Included in an ordinance if we were to ask our city attorney to write something up?
You remember, um, that one. Plant that we reviewed over at Harmon and Westport Parkway. And it was a distribution facility?
Yep.
And you ask the, the owner there, you ask them about motions, motion sensing. On the parking, on the, on the exterior lighting out the parking lot, you know, is there a way, if they didn't have truck movement at night? You know, could the lights go off? Period. Just be off. And then, you know, if they had truck movement, the, you know, the necessary lights would come on, something like that. Remember that discussion?
I do, yes.
The guy, he, I think he agreed that he could do that.
Yep. You know, the, the, the other port, the other part of that same conversation was around the height of those poles. You know, maybe we don't want poles that are fifty or sixty feet tall. Maybe we want the highest light pole to be thirty, thirty feet in the airport overlay. And every place else, maybe we want it to be sixteen foot.
Well, it could be. Is that somewhere else in this order?
It is not. There's not. But there, there is in the airport overlay, I believe the light poles can be as high as. Mr. Thepur, maybe you can, maybe you know this, but I think it's, it's either fif- forty-five or fifty feet.
Probably forty-five foot is the, is the height.
Where, where's the airport overlay district? What, what does that encompass?
Yeah, the property surrounding in the Alliance Airport.
To the, to the west side of the airport there? Along Intermodal, that's.
Yeah, and, and it's at the either end of the runway areas, I believe as well. It extends out a little bit.
What's going to develop there? I mean, you, you've got lighting. There's lighting restrictions by the FAA and around any runways, et cetera.
Oh, well, the runways are different, but you know, you, you've got some industrial areas inside the airport overlay that would be able to utilize that fifty foot lighting. Well, that's what UPS did. So I would be.
Okay, where?
I would not be opposed to having a, a light pole height limitation on. Included here.
You know, FedEx is on the property there, right? But UPS, I mean, over along one fifty. I'm just trying to picture where this overlay. How? How much?
You have to look at, you have to pull your.
Parkway North and Intermodal West. I don't know. Okay, that's okay. I don't need, I just, since.
AC Pennies falls in there, UPS falls in there. Everything that sits in, in, on the west side of the runway sits in there. The, uh, the east side of the runway sits in there. There's some development on the north end of the, I guess northeast of the end of the runways. Over there that were FedEx and, uh, I think BMW and there's some other developments off to the north. East side of the runways. All of that's in the airport overlay. Now, some of that's in Fort Worth. Uh, but.
I was gonna say that.
The Alliance Cor- the Alliance corridor, but some of that's not even in the city of Hasslet. But our, our piece that we're talking about, the most recent one that was inside of the city of Hasslet was the UPS one.
Along one fifty.
Along one fifty six.
Okay, I'm sorry. I guess, I thought our city limits. Were bad far.
I think it goes right up to that.
Craig, how would we come up with that? How would we come up with the actual height? Like what would be proper is, uh, do we have any documentation from maybe Fort Worth and see what they have?
Yeah, I mean, we could go do that or we could just say what we want it to be. You know? It would be.
But how do you figure that out? How do we figure that out?
You have to be sensible. Obviously, it can't be, you can't say an eight foot light pole because the, the number of light poles that somebody would have to have in a parking lot in order to provide. Proper illumination would be, you know, ridiculous and it would be overburden, you know, overburden some to have somebody to. Put that many light poles and that much electrical pole, you know, underground conduit and everything else it would take to do that. So there has to be a reasonable balance there. But again, the idea is. That those light poles aren't so high up in the air that. It's hard to shield them from the horizontal when you're looking at them from the road that may only be, you know, forty feet away. So if the light poles are in the, you know, sixteen foot range, I, you know, or less, I would think that that would be pretty reasonable. And from my perspective, that. You likely would, it would still remain shielded at the horizontal out to the road.
Be curious, well, be curious to see at some of these. Warehouses that we've already approved, what the height of those poles are? What are they using out in their, in their yards?
Yeah, I think probably most of them are probably thirty-five feet. But they, they're permissible in some areas to go much higher than that.
Well.
But, you know, that's industrial area and that's a diff- that's a different animal altogether than, you know, some, some of the retail areas.
Well, yeah, of course, retail, you're not going to get, light poles aren't going to be thirty-five feet. I mean, they're typically.
They might if it's a grocery store.
Yeah, I doubt it out in the parking lot. I mean, we can take a look at that, take a look and see what some of them are, but.
Do we want to take a shot at, we have putting a height limitation on? On this, or do we want to take time to go and research? You know, the longer we research and the, you know, the longer we go, then the more likely is that somebody could come in and do something that, again, that we. Is inconsistent with what we might want to have done.
I think my opinion at this point is we let the attorney write us something up and include the height in there and see if we all can agree on that.
Yeah.
Hey, do we want, do we want?
We just did a. There was a plant over there. Trying to remember what it was called. Anyhow, on the north, north side of Caraway. The southeast quadrant of, um. Intermodal and, um, future, and then Hasslet Parkway out in that area.
Right.
Have we seen the, uh, plans and any lighting plans for that? Because that includes a distribution facility. And that's to the east of that.
Yeah, the site plan that we reviewed and approved for that actually had the lighting included in it and that was part, the shielded lighting was part of that. Cause that was done under a PD.
How high were the poles? I don't remember any of that. I'd like to have our.
I'm not even sure that they, I'm not even sure that they've had light poles on that. If, I'm trying to go for memory, but I'm not even sure that they had light poles on that property.
Is Mike, Mike, that, Mike, do you know?
What property was that? I'm sorry.
This was the, uh, the warehouse that was, uh, that sits on the north side of the Caraway development. It was done under the PD.
Intermodal Parkway and, and Hasslet Parkway southeast corner.
Yeah, we just approved.
Now, I'll have to pull those. I'd pull those plans up and look at those. I can do that.
Yeah, Mike, that is the stream property. Green.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't recall light poles being included in that project. They could, they could have been, but I just don't remember them.
Yeah, but should there be? I don't know. I mean, will there be? That's the question. I don't know.
Well, they won't unless they were on the, on the site plan. They would have to come in and request, submit a request to put any of those in.
And I'm just saying, I don't remember that. I don't remember the site plan, remember that. I don't remember what the, uh. But that's another distribution warehouse, isn't it?
It is, isn't it? And, and it's all the truck traffic was going to be in between the two buildings. And so my guess is if there was any lighting, it would have been on the facade of the building. And the end of those interior lots or interior areas in between the two buildings.
Okay, you remember it better than I do. Yeah, all right. Well, it could be. All right.
All right. Somebody else is going to make a comment a minute ago.
Yeah, Greg, this is Matt. Um, I was just, you know, one of the things I was thinking about with the discussion we're having, I mean. If, if we're going to select heights of light poles, like I say, it's got to be based on something. Other than our own personal preference. I mean, there, there's going to be industry standards. For the areas they're covering. So, I mean. We can, we can create our own ordinances that'll be very difficult for engineers to meet.
Well, and that's why I think we need to look at what some of the. Facilities we've already approved, you know, what, what have we approved previously? And will they, uh? Will they do the shielding that you're talking about, Greg? Because I, I don't. You know, without having sort of an idea of what we've already. Looked at and approved, we, we're just kind of shooting in the dark right now. No, no pun intended. I mean, I've seen twenty-four foot poles. You know, you see some, like you say, thirty-five, forty feet tall in, in some of these in, in. Large parking lots, et cetera, so.
Well, we could, we could write or submit the request to Mr. Alavon to do it consistent with what some of our. Neighborhood communities have done, such as Keller, Southlake. Uh, and some of those, or, you know, we could. We could put not, not to exceed height. Obviously, you know, we're, we're talking about the maximum height and they could do anything up to that. They can do anything below that if they want.
Can we ask the staff to put together a summary of what we've approved in the last year? There've been several. Different kind of facilities brought before us. I mean, even, even the, uh. Atmos Energy Parking Lot out there. What, I don't remember what they're doing. In their maintenance facility on Westport.
Yeah, they had wall pack lighting and they had some, uh. Illumination out in the.
Yeah.
Other areas inside the.
And how high are the poles and, you know, what?
I don't, I don't recall.
I know. So I'm saying, can we get, can we ask the staff to give us a summary of what we've. Looked at and approved?
We can. So, so, but keep, keep in mind, you know, that we can continue the discussion for months if we want. And, but, you know, as longer we continue the discussion and the longer we research, the, the. Longer it's going to be before we get anything, you know, back from the attorney with the changes that can then go, we can make a recommendation to the city council on.
I understand that, but this is the first time we've talked about it. So I, I'd like to see it.
But there, there's nothing wrong with us asking for something to be inserted now and then continue to refine that or improve it over. But there, there's nothing wrong with us asking for something to be inserted now and then continue to refine that or improve it over time either.
But we don't even, I mean, this, this stuff was taken out. We don't even have an ordinance right now that includes it. The ordinance, you said it's pretty generic.
Yeah. But personally, I would be, but I would feel better about just if nothing more, just reinserting what we, we used to have. And then, and then, you know, if we want to continue to research. Ways to improve upon that in the future, I think that that. I think that would be great work.
I, I don't have a problem with that, but this, if this stuff worked. Before. And we don't know why it was taken out, put it back in. Insert it back into the order.
Does anybody object to that?
Unless somebody can come up and tell you or tell the board here why it was taken out, you know? Nobody liked it. They wouldn't comply with it. They thought it was crazy or whatever. I mean, whatever. I don't know. You know, had more problems trying to enforce it and it was worse. I, I don't know what the reason. Maybe they didn't like the way it was written. Whoever the they is.
I think it was just an accident when they deleted the overlays.
I think it was too, and I did, you know, I don't know how that happened, but. Because nobody could really understand why it wasn't carried over. I, I never found an answer to why it wasn't carried over.
So you can put this back in without it, without creating, recreating overlays, just insert. These pages back into the order.
This could go in section, this could go in article five. And it would not create any conflicts.
There you go.
So. So do we, uh, do we, would we like to ask this, the city attorney to, to? Take that approach and include it back into article five?
Sure.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean.
All right. So Ms., Ms. Rice, for, for the purposes of the agenda item, do we need to make a motion to make that request of Mr. Alabon or because this is a workshop? Could we ask that the, a draft ordinance be produced? That we could review and potentially take action on for our next meeting?
I believe that you could just go ahead and take a, make a request. Of the city attorney to put that information back in there as it was previously. And then see where you can go from there.
Or, or could we make a motion that it gets put, inserted back into article five and, and. And so make a. And have at the same time a motion be made that the, the revised article five then be presented to city staff as a recommendation for. Adoption? Or should we, should we bring it back here? Let us review it and then make a motion on it? Should we do it as two steps or one step?
I would suggest you go ahead and do it as two steps. Just so there's no issues. Down the road and we can figure out. Look and see why it was taken out and then go back and put it back in. And then figure it out from there.
Okay. Well, then I, that's what I think we should do. I think we should ask Mr. Alavon to put it, you know, to give us a draft ordinance, but with this included in article five that we can. Have on our agenda, so and then I have an agenda item next month that. Allows us to review and consider. And make a recommendation to city council adoption of our, the. The revised article five, including the lighting standards that were omitted from the current ordinances.
Yes, I think that would be a good idea.
Under the executive summary, Greg, it says. Members may just reconsider the adoption of the lighting ordinance, then the city attorney can prepare an ordinance including multiple districts or just one district for future consideration.
Yeah, and that's.
Multiple, right?
Yeah, I think it just should apply every, do it as one district.
You don't want to go back to the overlay district sort of thing, right?
No, 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 I don't want to do the overlays. Cause that, that, the overlays creates a whole nother layer of.
Yeah.
Things that you would have to do. I, I don't think we should be doing that.
So we want an ordinance including one district for future consideration?
Correct.
Would, plus the, leave the airport overlay district alone, be it like it is.
I think you should. I think we should. Doesn't mean we can't, can't, can't look at it again in the future, but I think that should be separate and apart from all the other stuff.
Okay, all right. That's the overlay district and then everything else would, would be one, one district. Okay, all right.
Now, there are, I guess there's, you know, we could, we could say those same elements needed to be in the overlay or the airport overlay, because what are we talking about here? Light pollution, shielding? You know? All of those things could still apply. You know, whether you do it on a third, you know, 35 or 50 foot pole or whatever.
You don't have. Around there.
You could have, you know, they could position those light poles so that the light. Is, is cast inward towards their property lines rather than outward. Now, I'm more inclined to say it should just apply everywhere.
Craig, I don't know.
What's that noise?
I don't know.
Aren't there?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know if this matters, but the agenda item does say consideration and action on recommendation.
Yeah, and I think that's the, what, kind of what I was asking Ms. Rice, whether or not we could. We, we just submit a request that this, for the city attorney to. Make the changes to the ordinance and bring it back to us so that we can actually see a written ordinance with our. Recommendation.
Sure.
And that we can take an action on next week or could we? Because we didn't have any public hearing and I don't know that we needed to on this, but. I don't know that we're, you know, we've written this. Agenda item such that we could actually make a motion to recommend something to the city council this evening. I think this was more of, you know, do we, do we want to? Give any direction to Mr. Alabon for, for making a revision to any of our ordinances?
Chairman, may I speak? This is Jim Quinn. You're in essence amending the zoning ordinance by reinserting these lighting standards. So you're going to have to request an ordinance from the city attorney defining what you said. And then once you approve that in concept, then you have to, cause you're amending the zoning ordinance? Or is it subdivision regulations?
This is under the. I believe this. I believe this falls under the subdivision ordinance.
Okay, then I'm, I'm, I'll thank Greg.
Yeah, I think this, I think article five is under the subdivision ordinance. But in any event, I, I think it needs to, you know, we need to get a clean document from the city attorney that we can review and complete, in its complete form that. That shows the revisions that we're asking or seeking. And then make a motion to recommend those revisions to the city council. And that's why I think it should be a two-step process, you know? Let's look at it next month and make a motion and then it goes to the city council. If in fact we review it and we make that recommendation.
I'll agree with that idea.
But does anybody oppose to the, these? Four paragraphs being. Applicable to all. Areas, the airport overlay and, and everything else inside are discovered by our subdivision ordinance?
Chairman Caddish, this is Thad Chambers. May I speak?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I can tell you from an economic development perspective, I do not recall any complaints prior to the zoning rewrite. Um, to the lighting standards. So. Again, if anybody's concerned about those, those aspects, uh, again, nothing was ever voiced to my office that the lighting. Standards were a hindrance.
That's great feedback. Thank you, Mr. Chambers. All right. So Ms. Rice, could you? Read back to us what the recommendation is to Mr. Alabon at this point?
Uh, yes, sir. I believe you would. Have the, have the city attorney. Rewrite the. Ordinance as previously submitted. Before it was deleted. And make sure that you include no overlay districts for that.
Yeah, so it's applicable throughout the city of Hasslet.
That sound correct?
Yes. Sounds correct to me. Is anybody to hear it differently? Okay, any other questions, comments, thoughts on our workshop for the evening? All right, moving on, agenda item seven, we didn't have an executive session and we don't need agenda item eight. Uh, agenda item nine, future agenda items. So do we appear that we're going to have a full calendar for September or will we have time to talk more about this? Lighting ordinance? Does anybody know what the pipeline looks like for our next meeting? Apparently not.
Well, who's, who's, who's reviewing? Right now, that's Mike or?
That is working with Mike. More swanky, uh, planning consultant. And I, we've got a lot of things working, but I don't know that it'll hit your P and Z agenda.
Can you, can you mute your phone, please? I think we're getting some feedback from you.
This is more swanky. And, uh, we probably will have several zoning cases that hit your, um. Desk for the, um, September meeting.
Okay. So do you think that we might have a pretty full agenda for the next meeting then, based on what you're saying today?
I, I would think there's, there's going to be either two or three, uh, public hearings that, that you're going to have regarding a zoning request.
Okay, so when you put the agenda together for the next meeting, then Ms. Rice, if you would, put the lighting ordinance review at the end. And let's do all of the zoning ordinances or. Um, other applicant. Items first.
Yes, sir.
That way they're not waiting for us to get through the lighting ordinance stuff. Okay. And I don't believe we need to discuss any changes to our calendar for the remainder of the year. I think all our dates are still good, unless anybody's aware of something that I'm not. And. Ms. Netaker, do you want to take care of agenda item 11?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
The meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:42 PM. Thank you, everybody, for your participation.
Thank you.
Thank you.